Good evening. Today is Monday, January 22nd and the time is now 6:31. I now call this Witten Woods to the School Board of Education meeting to order. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is 1.03. The first item is role card Misses Seymour. Would you please call the role?
Dr. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Knighton?
Present.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Spielman?
Present.
Ms. Bryant?
Present.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. The next item on the agenda is 2.01, District Honors, Recognitions, Gifts and Introductions. Superintendent Smith, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Usually we would do the art awards first, but Ms. Cameron Wilkinson says I have other important duties. So is it possible for me to go first? And stand up and let me see the back of your jacket. I want to make sure I have this right. So she's part of the children's theater and so she had to wear her official jacket to make sure. And are you, are you mom?
Yeah.
Okay. So when I said, "Well, I'm not sure if you can go first," and she says, "Well, I'm her mom." So yeah, you can go first. So Cameron, come on up. So let me read a little bit about you so people know all this great stuff that you've done. All right. So it gives me great pleasure to nominate Cameron Wilkinson for the January 2024 Student of the Month. Cameron's a 10th grade student. Wow, she has a 4.0 Honor student. Bravo for that. She loves school. She maneuvers through her day making great decisions, creating challenges for herself, and embraces all that high school offers. We recently had a conversation about staying at Witten Woods or leaving and trying CCP classes or even the early college academy at Miami. I could tell that she was struggling with that decision. After weighing the pros and cons of leaving or staying, she decided to take all the classes that Witten Woods had to offer. She also wants to continue to be a band member. So it's good when you fit all the categories. That's absolutely amazing. When I asked Cameron's teachers to give me a statement describing Cameron, they were quick to respond. Cameron's choral teacher, Ms. Garkowski, says that she is a bright light. Her dedication to improving her craft and character shines above the rest. Ms. Edmonds, Cameron's math teacher, stated that Cameron is bubbly. Show some bubbly. Bubbly, outgoing, friendly and intelligent. Ms. Hoff, Cameron's science teacher, states that Cameron's work ethic is impressive. Cameron is one of our leading actresses in our school plays and musicals. If you've had the pleasure of spending an evening or Sunday afternoon attending the high school's theater events, perhaps you would recognize Cameron in Matilda, Young, Gifted and Black, The Addams Family. She will be in Little Mermaid Musical in the spring. She even worked behind the scenes as student director for Play On. She has such a talent for acting. As a matter of fact, Cameron got the acting bug when she participated in a camp with the children's theater at the young age of eight. She just returned earlier this week from the Junior Theater Festival in Atlanta, Georgia, where she received the All-Star Award for the Cincinnati Theater. So what I'd like for you to do is you're going to tell us a little bit about yourself because you're an actress, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And but I want you to say it in different characters when you go. Just make it, make it exciting.
Well, a little bit about me is that. Thank you. Well, a little bit about me is that, like I said, from the age of like eight or nine, I've been doing like a lot of theater. I did a lot of camps with the Cincinnati Children's Theater. I took a bit of a break, but I did Matilda in 2022. Yeah. And I played Matilda. And I was a middle schooler back then, but they allowed the middle schoolers since COVID kind of canceled our play. And so it allows me to like, be like, hey, like, I like doing theater. So I did a camp in 2022 with the Cincinnati Children's Theater that I did to be Young, Gifted and Black. I did JTF in 2023. And then I did The Addams Family, onto another show where I did Honk Junior in the camp. And then I also student directed for the first time Play On. And then JTF again. And then I'm in Cinderella at the Taft Theater, which is in February from 17th to 26th. So please come if you would like. But and then after that is Little Mermaid. So I've just been like back-to-back theater. And I do a lot of choir. I'm a songwriter and singer also. So like, that's a really like big passion of mine, but theater is definitely like something that helped my inner music. So, yeah.
You know what I realized? As I was reading this, I forgot I am her agent. So I represent her in all these theatrical opportunities. So thank you for signing me up.
You don't.
So we'd like to give you something very special for all of your hard work. We're going to honor you with a certificate. And this is from the Kiwanis Organization. And there is a gift certificate on the back for your enjoyment in between all these musicals and plays and everything. So thank you very much for everything that you do. So mom, and yeah, come up for photo opportunity. Yeah. That's amazing. So the next one we're moving through, we're going to go back to the art opportunities. And Aina Morales Diaz here tonight? Okay. Principal selection for, that was a superintendent's selection. And show it, Ms. Jordan. Very impressive. Okay. The next one is the principal selection, Alyssa Jenkins. You know, Dr. Johnson, you know, you can look at a student and you know that that's who that is, right? All right. You look like an Alyssa. So Alyssa, why don't you tell us a little bit about your piece and what inspired you to do it? Is this watercolor or what is this? Okay, to the mic?
All right. My piece is based off one of the backgrounds used inside one of my favorite shows. When I was asked to do the project, I knew that I wanted to do something that was more cartoony rather than a realistic background. Because I feel like whenever it comes between like realism and, you know, cartoons and animated stuff and media like that, I prefer to do animated medium rather than realism because I feel with animated medium, I'm able to branch out more and express myself further instead of sort of being stuck in the box of reality. So I don't know what else to say.
That's incredible. Absolutely.
I'm very grateful that I've been able to be here tonight and receive this award. It actually surprised me a lot when they called me to the office and I'm very grateful to be here today.
Well, we appreciate you very much. So raise your hand if you've ever been stuck in the box of reality. Lonely place. So mom, come up for another picture, please. This could be my next book. Is Allison here tonight? Allison? Allison receives the honorable mention. Wow. Oh, that's a one-point perspective. That's pretty cool. So talk a little bit about it, please.
I took inspiration from a lot of former projects. Last year I actually did the same project except I believe in two-point perspective. So I kind of wanted to build upon that. I use a squid instead of a octopus, but I wanted to do something a little bit different. I also took inspiration from a couple of shows I've been watching and just generally stuff that I'd been learning, which is like old Japanese folklore. So I decided to put that and use that for my buildings. And I don't really know, I just wanted to do something a little bit different because I don't really work with any of these mediums or perspectives. So I just wanted to try something out.
Bravo. You did a great job. Okay, so to the award, art winners, Dr. Johnson just reminded me of something that makes us happy, but it may make you sad. We do hold on to your art until you graduate. We put it in frames and we put it in some of our buildings. So you have to return the art. Yes, you do. All right. So this is the art repo person. She's coming around to pick up the art.
This is not the job she signed up for.
Welcome new board member.
Take a picture.
Guess what? This is my first official board meeting.
Nothing like trial by fire though, it's fun.
Dr. Johnson inspired me again.
You would have kept it if it were up to me, you know.
Yeah, we want to encourage you to stay here until you graduate. That's what that is about. Your, but your art is also displayed somewhere within the building. Well, it'll depend on where they find a space for it. We used to put them in superintendent's office, on the board office. It's going to be a new board office, so there'll be lots of space for pictures.
There's going to be a special, a special place for that art. And you, what grade are you in?
Oh, I'm in eighth grade.
Eighth grade. So we'll be here for several years and then you can get on your way out.
What grade are you in? Okay.
Oh, right. Good job, ladies.
All right.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson, is Taysha here? Taylor, I mean, Taylor Griggs, she here? All right, Taylor, come on up. Let me find my cheat sheet. Okay. So this is written by your great coach. Is he a good coach?
Yes.
Okay. It has been an honor coaching Taylor Griggs for the past three years. Taylor has become a complete package by developing strong leadership skills and being a role model for the other team members while maintaining a whopping 4.25 GPA. She's number six in her graduating class, but you're going to do something about that, right? Okay, all right. Taylor is very coachable in many ways. She's very knowledgeable about the sport and her willingness to help her fellow athletes during practice and matches is without peril. She is also very passionate on and off the lanes. Taylor's hard work and commitment resulted in her becoming the captain of the Lady Warriors 2324 bowling team. I personally wish I had Taylor for four years, for many years to come. She has become a complete athlete in this sport. As of now, she has 17 games and 2,449 pins with an average of 144.1 and a 194 high and a 333 series. For all those bowlers, that means something, right? I'm so proud of Taylor being a part of this team. In order for her to be nominated, she would have had to do something special in the classroom, maintain an academic standard of 3.0, show respect for coaches, show enthusiasm, display commitment, demonstrate honesty in playing by the rules, have high moral character. The Skyline Student Athlete of the Month award is sponsored by the Forest Park Skyline's Chili Restaurant, a business partner of Wittenwood City Schools. Student athletes who are honored receive a Skyline gift card. All right, she has to say a few, few words first. Yeah, 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 yeah.
I just want to say thank you for this opportunity. I was actually surprised because I didn't know I was getting this. But yes, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. And I take leadership actually really seriously. I took a lot of leadership classes at the University of Charleston. And I really just want to build upon like being a leader because I feel like it's really important for people to be leaders nowadays. So yeah, thank you.
Mr. Wilson, why don't you come and get a picture? Where's mom?
Bring the family.
Yeah, everyone. Fantastic.
University of Charleston.
Yes.
That's West Virginia, just in case anybody didn't know.
We understand.
West Virginia.
Great write-up of Mr. Henderson. Excellent, excellent write-up.
Is it, no, it's not. It's West Virginia, right?
It is West Virginia.
Yeah, I was going to say, no, we don't have a connection. We're South Carolina.
We do have a connection with Charleston and we have several students in their college credit plus program. And I think Dr. Martin just received her doctorate last year from that university.
From University of Charleston.
We're excited.
That's my home state.
This is what Naisha James, Lisa's teacher, write. And this is for Lisa Augustine Mendoza. Is she here tonight? Yes. As a seventh grade student, Lisa Augustine Mendoza was recommended to be a member of the middle school peer mediation group. Lisa engaged in learning the mediation curriculum and became one of the group leaders. Although we did not get the mediation program up and running this year, Lisa made herself available to assist as a mediator in a peer conflict. Lisa is a very, is an active listener, provides relatable advice to the peers experiencing conflict. She also helps to create a confidential space and the opportunity for her classmates. Lisa consistently demonstrates the warrior way, trust, respect and responsibility. She is a great example of trustworthiness. Students are selected for the Kiwanis Character's Key Trustworthiness Award based on the following description. Trustworthiness means being honest in words and actions, doing what is right even when no one is looking, keeping promises, being loyal to a person or cause. The Kiwanis Character's Key Trustworthiness Award is sponsored by the Green Hills Forest Park Kiwanis Club, a partner of Wittenwood City Schools. Students who are honored receive a La Rosa's gift card. Thank you for everything.
Say a few words.
Few words, please. Yes.
She was just like, hey, how you doing?
I'm actually really honored to get this award because I was really surprised from Ms. James to give me this award because I never thought I was going to get a trustworthiness award because I didn't know that I was really that trustworthy.
Wow. That's amazing. Photo opportunity. All the family members come up, please. The next award goes to the Skyline Teacher of the Month because if you have great students, there must be great teachers. And this award goes to incredible Ms. Megan Weaver. Come on. So there are seniors at the high school now that wish they still had Ms. Weaver. All right. Incredible music, music, music teacher. Ms. Weaver teaches music to all grades at the South Campus, one through six. She is a great relationship builder and with her students. Her lessons are engaging and fun. Students enjoy attending her class. She touches the community by taking a group of core students to the tree lighting ceremony at the Forest Park Firehouse. Wow. Ms. Weaver has a positive attitude and it shows to her colleagues and students. In order to be nominated for the Skyline Teacher of the Month, teachers must excel in the classroom, motivate students, have incredible leadership, creativity and imagination, dedication and communication. And Ms. Weaver, of course, possesses all of those attributes. Thank you very much for everything that you do.
I did not know how to prepare a little speech, but. I just wanted to say thank you. I have been here for 10 years at Witten Woods and I feel such a deep passion and honor to teach the kids and I just truly love my job. So I feel super grateful for this. I got, I appreciate you letting me come back this month because I did not know last month that I was nominated. And I am so gracious and appreciative of this honor. I love working here. I love the students and building them as young musicians and just young people in general is really important to me. So thank you very much.
Bravo. Thank you. And Ms. Weaver, I'm going to tell you, okay, so you were nominated in November. Of course, this is December. We were going to keep going until, you know, like spring break. We were going to keep trying to find, find you.
I was either going to run you down.
And eventually we were going to just meet at your house, but this is cool. This, this next recipient, Skyline Teacher of the Month for the month of January, I got to tell you, Ms. Brasswell is absolutely amazing. When we had to move her assignment based on the needs of the community, she didn't complain. She went and did an excellent job. And the students and all of the staff at the school absolutely admire you and think that you're an incredible teacher. So I know when I said you didn't go kicking and screaming, they said you did say a few things about me later on, but that's okay. Because you see, because you see, you made it here. That's what, that's what counts. So this is what Mr. Day says about this incredible teacher, Ms. Brasswell. Skyline Teacher of the Month for the intermediate school is Jackie Brasswell. For all the years that I've known Jackie Brasswell, she has been the consummate professional. She has been an unofficial mentor to countless teachers over the years. I've known her in a number of different roles throughout the years at Witten Woods and she has always been a model of consistency in her teaching. She has always been willing to learn and grow in her practice and has been collaborative in sharing her experiences with others for the betterment of our kids. The past couple of years, she has been hard on, has been hard on Ms. Brasswell due to her own health conditions. She has been giving up, giving her best to Wittenwood City Schools even when she's been teaching in pain. Bravo to that. And he finally says, "Ms. Brasswell does it for our kids, our community and our parents, and I can't think of a more deserving teacher for this award, Jackie Brasswell."
Those words are in my heart quite powerful and I appreciate that Mr. Day and others have seen something in me that I wasn't really paying attention to because my passion is get in on all fours and teach, teach, teach and do what I can to learn how to teach better and be effective with it, not necessarily efficient, but effective. And having Cameron here earlier almost made my heart melt because I had her in eighth grade. So it is truly a blessing and I stand on the backs of my colleagues, some of here that have helped me along this path, held me up, told me, "Don't give up. We're in prayer." They were in prayer with me to learn to do my job better. And I am so proud of them as well as the many students that are not here that helped me as well. Because we're all the team. It's not just me and my colleagues, it's the students too. I've learned a great deal of things from them. So I appreciate this award. Thank you so much. Thank you to the parents and the community for allowing me to do something that I really love doing. And I won't tell you how long I've been doing it, but I appreciate you very much. Thank you.
So I, yeah, so when I, when you were, when you were giving your, your, your speech, first of all, I totally appreciate you. And I'm looking around the room and I see some of your colleagues, they are kind of emotional because they know some of the struggles, but you keep giving us the best. And so I'd like for Dr. Raglin to come up and get, become part of the picture because I know she knows some of your energy.
Turn your picture around. Turn your frame around. She's like, I'm reading that. Yes, it's okay.
Well, we've come to the exciting part of the show and this is January School Board Recognition Month. And the student, staff and communities of the Wittenwood City Schools join the Ohio School Boards Association to honor the exemplary leadership service and dedication given for our elected board members on behalf of our school district and its communities. So we have an incredible Sanaya Long that's going to present you guys with your awards. The first recipient is President Bryant. Come on up. Board members tend to have a lot to say so they don't have to give a speech tonight. We can hold up on that because this, we would be getting out about 10:30. So when you get it, stand down so we can get a full picture of everyone. Okay? All right, yeah. The next recipient is Vice President, Mr. Brandon Smith, who's not here tonight, but we'll bring him back for a picture. The next one is Dr. Viola Johnson, who has been a committed board member for how many years now, Doc?
What did we say, 11?
11 years. Fantastic. The next recipient is Ms. Angela Knighton. And Ms. Knighton asked a question. She says, "Superintendent, I'm just getting here. How am I getting an award?" And I said, "Because we know what great work you're going to do in the future." So there we go. And finally, Mr. Bill Spielman, the new, other new board member. And Witten Woods High School student, Sanaya Long, is presenting the awards and Certificates of Appreciation on behalf of the Ohio School Board Association to our incredible board members. We do have some special gifts for you as well.
I worked on that with my own two hands. I just want to tell you. Me and Mrs. Jordan, we were a team. I brought the paper and she did the rest.
All right, one more picture. Make sure they have big smiles, Ms. Jackson. All right? Like you're happy about this experience. There you go. All right, thank you, guys. Madam President, that's all for the District Honors, Recognition, Gifts and Introductions.
Thank you, Superintendent Smith. The next item on the agenda is 3.01, a recess. The board will take a five-minute recess. We're back in session. The next item on the agenda is 4.01, public comments. Mr. Seymour, do we have, it looks like we have one public comment. Yes, Dr. Wears?
And I will be your timekeeper.
Please come up to the podium. You have three minutes.
I have a letter that I have made copies of for the board members because my intention is to address the new board. is to address the new board, in particular, the new president and the vice president, regrettably unable to hear the message in its original form, but I have a copy of what I'm going to, of my remarks for him, which I'll distribute after I'm done reading it to the president. It's addressed, Dear Deborah and Brandon, as a former member of the Board of Education with a knowledge of history, I wish to observe there was, has never been a worse levy outcome than the 76.58% rejection that occurred May 2023. There has also never been six rejections in a row, as in 2023. Consequently, there must never have been a more urgent need for a new MO, modus operandi, than now. I hesitate, actually, to make this a public statement after what I witnessed in the awards given to the students and the teachers. This is a district that deserves a better fate. I have to say that what the Ohio School Board Association has recommended for community engagement is necessary, but not sufficiently new. Our district has nine former board members living in the district and three former members living outside. The new MO I recommend is to call on this group of uniquely experienced people on a regular basis, such as with a task force, for the institutional memory they have. Priscilla Franklin, also a former board member, and I have been pilot testing this idea in part via four community meetings held in December and January. Former board members Jack Lee and Jessica Miranda participated, along with present members Angela Knighton and Bill Spielman, plus 26 other community members who are stakeholders that want to be a part of the future of our district. To you, Deborah and Brandon, as officers of the board, I offer this MO for your consideration and invite you to join us in this urgent program. Yours truly. With that, I'll close my remarks, but answer any questions you might have. Did I make it? I guess.
You made it. Yes, you did. Good job.
Thank you so much for your comments. Appreciate it. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is 5.01, comments from the Wenton Woods Teachers Association. Do we have a representative? Seeing none. The next item on the agenda is 5.02, Ohio Association of Public School Employees, O2.
Good evening, board members, community, Superintendent Smith. On behalf of OC members and myself, I would like to say welcome to our two new board members. We look forward to working with you this school year and I wish everyone a happy and safe rest of the week. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. The next item on the agenda is 6.01, to approve the minutes. I would like to say before we do that we have minutes from our December 11th regular meeting with December 18th special meeting. And we're going to defer those approvals because we don't have enough current board members who attended the meeting to vote on those minutes for today. However, there is a motion that's needed to approve the minutes of January 8th as well as the special meeting on January 9th. I'll make a motion to approve both the January 8th board meeting minutes and the January 9th meeting minutes. I'll second that. The motion has been motioned in second. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none. Mr. Seymour, will you call the vote?
Sure. Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Knighton?
Aye.
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye. Thank you for it. The vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 7.01, financial statements from December 2023. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes, board, you have before you the statements through December 23. The general fund revenues for the year-to-date are at 27.7 million. The months-to-date revenues for the general fund were 2.3 million, of which most was the state foundation. We have not yet received any of our real estate tax advances. That should come in your report for January. The year-to-date expenditures for the general fund are at 27.1 million and we are currently approximately 4.2% under budget, or 2.5 million. And then the final report for you is a list of all of the funds and the district had a total unencumbered balance in all funds on December 31st of 17.8 million and each fund balance is listed for you.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. A board, a motion is in order.
This one needs to be presented for audit, right?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Any questions before we present this audit? I do have a question for you, Mr. Seymour. On the very first page, the bank reconciliation statement, under the book balance, we have a beginning balance plus receipts and then less expenditures?
On the very first page?
Mm-hmm. I don't know.
Which column?
The second column.
What we're doing here is we want to make sure that the first column, which is our fund balance, matches our book balance, which matches the bank balance.
Okay.
And what we're doing on the bottom is showing you the reconciling items. Is that, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
I just saw the parentheses and I'm like, okay, I think that's deficit, so let me find out where that's coming from.
Yeah, that's total expenditures through the year-to-date in that middle column.
Great. Thank you for that.
You called them reconciling, reconciling, you, what was the other title? Part of the title?
I'm sorry, I don't.
You, you just referred to those, those categories as reconciling balances?
Yeah, we're reconciling the three balances together. The fund balance, the book balance, and the bank balance.
Okay. Thank you.
So, let the December 23rd statement, financial statements as presented, be presented and filed for audit. The next item on the agenda is 8.01, investments for December 2023. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes, our investment portfolio for the month of December was approximately 29.1 million. For the general fund, we earned $120,763 and our building funds earned $15,010 for total interest for the month of December of $136,773.
Board, a motion is in order?
Madam President, I move we approve the investment report as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Spielman. It's been motioned. Can I have a second?
I'll second that.
It's been motioned in second. Mr. Seymour, can you call the vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Knighton?
Aye.
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is 9.01, school reports.
Madam President, the students are working diligently to get ready for the celebration of excellence, so I am going to move to read a, a winter advisory letter as it relates to all buildings so that people know what to anticipate for tomorrow.
Thank you.
So, this went out today. Dear Warrior families, there is a winter advisory issued on Monday, January 22nd, which was early this morning at 3:00 a.m., until Tuesday, January 23rd at noon tomorrow. The rain will start this evening around 8 and last until noon, according to the Doppler reports. The freezing rain is expected in our area around 8. The total ice accumulation is up to 1/4 of an inch. Please remember the safety of students and staff and parents is always a priority. We will pay close attention to this weather pattern and update you periodically. And we do encourage students to take home their Chromebooks and all their electronic devices and in order to keep current with their assignments. So, I'm going to be meeting with Ms. Jackson after this meeting to determine what the weather pattern looks like and if it's a definite that we're going to have the ice because our buses will not make it and they will actually have to call off, which we transport about 1,200 students by yellow bus.
Thank you, Superintendent. Of course, our safety of our little ones is paramount, so we want everyone to be safe out there. The next item on the agenda is our two facilities updates. Superintendent, you have the floor.
So, we, we're going to take another tour. I know you guys had a tour earlier in the year about the facilities update. And I know the parents and students are wondering like, why is it taking so long? And it's taking such a long time because we had to really gut the entire building. And so, Ms. Jackson has a few pictures to bring up today to kind of show you where we are. We have painters in there moving things around. We're putting up steel walls and beams and the building, how many of you've ever been in the intermediate building before now? It will not look the same. When you go in now, it, we've taken a lot of time and care and patience. And one of the things that we did not want to happen is when the teachers move into this, this incredible space, we didn't want them to have any kind of animosity because they didn't go into a new building, but a renovated building. But everything in this building is brand new. So, we've taken a lot of time and care and patience. It's taken as much time, yes, yeah, the switchgear held us up for many, many months, but it is here and the electric system is working at top priority. And the good thing about it is we're within the confines of our budget. So, that's the good news. I don't know if you could see any of the pictures, but Ms. Jackson went through today and was my civil engineer, making sure she was taking good pictures about what's coming on. And we're, we'll keep updating you with the pictures and then we'll actually have a grand tour very, very soon so that people can be very, very proud that we didn't go halfway on this building because our, our we Warriors will be in that space. Okay.
Thank you for that. I had the opportunity to see the progress thus far with the switchgear. It is a phenomenal space. And for those of you in the community who have seen the space and remember it from before, it, it looks totally different, but there's so much history and richness in the building that is still there even with the renovations. One of the things that I loved is there is a plaque from 1968 that talks about when the school was actually, you know, erected and that's going to stay. So, that plays on the history of our wonderful school district from Green Hills and Forest Park. So, I think the community will love it when it's finished. I know I'm super excited to see it, to see the banners that were there. I know Dr. Johnson and I were. Yes, it's just the gym, the floor, it's, it's a phenomenal place to be. The new health center that will be there, so we're excited and I think the community will really love the fact that A, it's under budget, we didn't have to come to you asking for money to complete this project, and it looks just as beautiful as all the other buildings we have.
And then you won't have to worry about how to track board meetings because they'll all be in that central location.
Absolutely.
They'll be in one area. In case you get there early to the north campus, just in case, Dr. Johnson.
Well, I like that too, where they are building the CO, it's going to have its own entrance. It's going to have its own driveway around there. And when we went on our tour, they showed us all of those things and there's, I can't remember the square footage of this building, but it seemed really large as we were walking through it, even larger than I remember it before.
But it's so open and airy, that's the difference.
It's open, you know, because before it was compartmentalized with walls. So, now that it's like really wide open, it's like, is this the same square footage? I mean, it seems like they've even built onto the back of it, but they didn't. It's just the way they opened it up, you know? So, it's really quite an amazing space and I can't wait to see it finished and see the, you know, the healthcare center in there and that's going to.
Exciting.
Remarkable.
All exciting.
Remarkable work.
All exciting.
Wonderful. Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Dr. Johnson, for your comments. The next item on the agenda is 9.03, first read revised board policies. Superintendent Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, board, these revised policies are up now, but you will have a month to review them, to get familiar with them, and then bring them back. We'll bring them back for you to vote on them next month. And I always make it a point to read what the policies are in case people at home are wondering, what are you guys working on next? This gives them an opportunity to understand it. So, there's a revision for policy 0141.02, bylaws, conflict of interests. Revised policy 0164, notice of meetings. Policy revision 2623.02, program, the third grade reading guarantee. Policy 3120.08, professional staff, employment of personnel for co-curricular extracurricular activities. Policy 4120.08, classified staff, employment of personnel for co-curricular extracurricular activities. Policy 5113.01, intra-district open enrollment. And please look at that one very, very carefully because there are some new changes in open enrollment and the open enrollment policies. And then finally, 5320, students immunization. There was some controversy in districts regarding the immunization, and this is the only one that I'll speak on now. Because we are considered the surrogate parents of students when they're in our care, we can make sure they can get medical opportunities or medical care. One of the things that confused the community and some communities up north where, when it was time for students to receive the COVID vaccine, students had refused to take the vaccine. And there were adults who said, well, since you're here and we have the surrogate authority, we're going to make sure you take the vaccine. The answer is no. That is not part of the process of what we use because the parents are the only ones that can make that determination about kids receiving the vaccine. The other thing is they talk about an epidemic and in the event that there's an epidemic in a system, once the system is cleared of the epidemic, you can ask students to stay home if they are not cleared medically, but once the epidemic is up, then they must be allowed to return to school and make up any work that they may have missed.
Thank you for that. As we all know, immunizations are vital for the health and safety of those around, but again, parents are the decision makers and we respect that. So, thank you, Superintendent Smith, for speaking on that.
Personnel?
Yep. Next item on the agenda is 10.01, personnel schedules. Superintendent Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board, the recommendations to approve the personnel schedules as presented, resignations, Schedule A, Schedule B, employment certificated staff, personal employment support staff, Schedule C, Schedule D, personal employment certificated and not certificated should be, it should be non-certificated, not uncertificated, excuse me. And then final, Schedule E, which would be leaves of staff.
Board, a motion is in order?
I approve the, Madam Secretary, I move we approve the personnel.
Madam President.
Madam President.
Yeah, Madam Secretary, that's a movie, sir.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
My apologies, Madam President. Approve the personnel schedules. No, this is the, I move the, approve the supplemental salary schedule effective December 1st, 2023.
Go back. To approve the personnel schedule, we haven't gotten to the supplementals. So, just A, B, C, D, and E.
My error again.
That's okay.
Madam, Madam President, I move we approve the personnel schedules as presented.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Spielman. It's been motion, oh, second and second. Thank you, Ms. Knighton.
Yes.
Motion in second. Any questions? Discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Seymour, will you call the vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Knighton?
Aye.
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is to 10.02, supplemental salary schedules. Superintendent Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President, I'm going to defer this to the treasurer, Mr. Seymour. The reason the supplemental schedules are before you for December 1st is there was one addition that he can give you clarification on.
Thank you, Superintendent. Mr. Seymour?
There were two positions.
Two? Okay.
Yes. Girls wrestling coach was added and junior varsity bowling.
Thank you.
What group is that in, Mr. Seymour?
Girls wrestling coach, group four.
Four, okay.
Yep, I see that.
And then junior varsity bowling. And then junior varsity bowling, group seven.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order? I'll make a motion to approve the supplemental salary schedule effective December first, twenty twenty three. Thank you, Ms. Knighton, it's been motion-
I'll second it.
And second, thank you, Dr. Johnson. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, will you call the vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Knighton?
Aye.
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
The vote has been passed unanimously. The next item on the agenda is ten point oh three, resolution, National School Counseling Week, February fifth through the ninth, twenty twenty four. Dr. Johnson, will you read the resolution?
I'll be happy to.
Thank you.
I'm reading the resolution for the National School Counseling Week for February the fifth through the ninth, twenty twenty four. Whereas the Wintonwood City School District Board of Education wishes to recognize our capable, caring, and professional counselors who are an integral part of the Wintonwood City Schools and, whereas in an age of educational reform and school performance standards, student welfare, motivation, and academic achievement are essential goals for the success of our students, school counselors can assist with this mission because of their training and education they have received. And whereas, it is appropriate and fitting that the school district and community recognize the important contribution school counselors provide to enhance the future success of our children. Now therefore, be it resolved on this twenty second day of January, twenty twenty four, that the Wintonwood City School District Board of Education supports and recognizes the important role of school counselors and thereby, thereby proclaims February the fifth through the ninth, twenty twenty four, as National School Counseling Week.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Board, a motion is in order?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution for National School Counseling Week, February the fifth through the ninth, twenty twenty four, as presented.
And I'll second it. It's been motioned and second. Are there any questions or discussions? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, will you call for the vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Knighton?
Aye.
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is eleven point oh one legislative report.
Madam President, I had some computer issues, so I'm gonna defer to Mr. Smith to give us our legislative report.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. So here's the first one. Lawmakers, this is up for conversation. It's actually Republican sites and in our, in our particular district, and Danny Isom, where they're contemplating having House Bill three forty eight that would incentivize students to come to school by paying them. It's a monetary situation. So, yes.
Who would pay them?
That's what, that's what I don't know.
A slush fund.
Okay.
Okay. The other bill receiving sponsorship testimony was House Bill three thirty nine, a bill to provide educational savings accounts for students attending a religious school that does not accept voucher money. Stay tuned with that. That would be House Bill three thirty nine and also House Bill three forty eight. On the education side, the testimonies were heard, implementation of science, of reading implementations for all schools. And so the, there's a public review about this now, so stay tuned, that will be coming closer to Wintonwoods in the near future. One of the problems about the science of reading, the lawmakers talk about how it will support phonics-based approach as the science of reading endorsed by the governor for state. And the next one is, the director said there are about one hundred and thirty-six thousand students begin Ohio, begin Ohio's high school in, on Ohio every year, but only sixty-nine percent are leaving with a two-year or four-year degree. So there is something happening in the connections between kids going to universities and two-year colleges and coming out with the degree that we talk about. I will say that Dr. Ragland, Ms. Bray, Mr. Martin, and that entire team, what they've done is they've made some provisions by contacting kids, even though they're graduated, to say, hey, how are things going? If you need our support, if you need our help, stay the course, make sure you stay, get the degree, talk to the professor, because kids are on their own now and they're trying to figure out, how do you maneuver through it? One of the things that I can tell you, PBL does give our kids the flexibility to know how to navigate on the university campus, so it does have some other attributes. I don't know if you guys noticed that the young people who stood up today were very articulate about their visions and dreams.
Absolutely.
All of these presentations do something. When you present with your team and your group, it does do something. So NTN and PBL is actually the cornerstone of who we are and what we do. There's a demand for tech skills that's increasing daily. However, one of the things that's happened along the way, the computer tech industry has become so demanding that many of the people that were going through the tech course could not pass the course. So the state is now talking about making some concessions in order to create better computer science classes without preparing for a larger pool of qualified teachers. So the teachers are there, but the end result, we're not getting them through. And that's all across the state, all across every state, as a matter of fact. So they're talking about making some concessions in order for teachers to be able to, be able to teach this highly, you know, specified course called computer science. So it says, to help meet the demand for more computer science teacher, we're removing barriers by covering the costs of coursework, materials, and exams for teachers who want to teach computer science in Ohio's K-12 classroom so they can better educate Ohio's future workforce. Okay. Training available for the Ohio School Safety Centers, offering a free online course on state laws requiring students to receive lessons on the prevention of sexual abuse, dating, violence, and sexual violence. So they're now saying that, kids, you do need some training because I think you're putting yourselves in compromising situations, and then we have two victims. All right? So we need to be very aware. The other one is, Senate Bill one eighty six, property taxation, to require payment of property taxes and assessments with a lot split for transferred fee, generally prohibit tax delinquent property owners for purchasing tax foreclosed property. So you're behind in your taxes, but you're trying to purchase foreclosed property. They're saying you must be up on your taxes before you start talking about purchasing foreclosed property.
Makes sense.
Makes sense.
Makes a lot of sense, yeah.
All right.
A rare occasion that a bill makes sense.
And I did mention House Bill three forty eight. I, I do have some reservations about increasing student attendance and graduation rates through financial wars and incentives. The question is, is this one of those unfunded mandates where they're saying, we're going to incentivize you, well, who's paying the bill?
Right.
And how do you determine how much to pay? All right. This other one is really in tune with our coaches, all of our athletic coaches, House Bill eighty-two. We've talked about this before, where coaches need to receive mental health training to revise or renewal requirements for pupil activity program permits and to amend the versions of section three-three-one-nine-point-three-zero-three. What's happening to the board, there are coaches who are becoming ill-tempered when things don't go their way with a win, a loss, and some of these things have been taken out on referees. So these two bills kind of will work together when refs are making the complaint, or there have been, there's a shortage of refs wanting to call certain games. They're saying, I will not referee that game for fear of consequences or, or something that may, you know, retaliate along the way. The way the, I, I'm looking for information to determine, and I haven't seen it, that in the event that there is an assault on a ref, what are the consequences for the person? And it doesn't ever say that you can't come back to a game. It just says that they're gonna do something. What that something is, I don't know. Yeah. So those are some of the legislative reports that are, you know, hot off the press. And stay tuned, next month, there's a lot of activity about transgender.
That's what I was gonna say, the Title IX and transgender thing is still-
Lots of activities coming, coming our way.
On the table.
All right, so just be aware.
The other thing I think I remember, something about the school buses and passing a school bus, that legislation is still a hot topic with respect to what the penalty is gonna be if someone passes a school bus. You know, when they put up the flag or they're getting ready to let children off the bus. And I see it all the time. I mean, you know, the bus slows down, they put the little flag out, people are trying to hurry up and get around them. That's gonna come up with, you know, a stiffer penalty. They were talking about putting cameras on the buses, I believe, so they can catch-
Well, there are cameras on buses.
On the bus, but not outside to catch those people going around them, that's what they're doing. But again, that was the talk, who's gonna fund it?
And who's gonna reinforce that?
Well, the camera would catch the person, then you would turn it over to the boy. I don't know how it's gonna work, but they never talk about who's gonna fund these things. That is really kind of a caveat.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Thank you Superintendent Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
The next item on the agenda is eleven point oh two, Great Oaks Career Technical Center Report. And Board, I do believe the representative sent the report via email. All right, moving on. Next item on the agenda is twelve point oh one, board motions and recommendations.
I just have, I don't know if it's, it's on a motion, it's recommendation. We were, we were sent the information with the, with the brochure. Is, do we need to talk about this in executive session or can we talk about this here in executive session? Okay, so that, that will be tabled until we get to executive session then. That was, oh, that was it? Were we gonna talk about the Great Oaks appointment? We tabled that in our committee appointments in our organizational meeting. We tabled that because we were trying to, did we get in contact with anybody from?
You would have to pass a resolution.
We would have to pass a resolution?
The resolution, I believe, is already drafted.
Yeah.
It just needs the president's signature. And I think there was a, a draft of it presented last month, but I don't know what was, what became of it.
Okay, well, we'll-
We didn't have it on the organizational meeting.
We didn't have it at the organization, we had it in the convention, so we'll-
We'll have to, yes, we'll get that, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
We would have to approve that.
So just for the, the purposes of us knowing the process, Mr. Seymour, after we pull the resolution and we presented, we can make that an item on our agenda for the next board meeting.
If you want, if you want to.
Yeah.
Your next meeting in February?
Yes, and our meeting in February. Now, do we need to contact the Great Oaks and let them know that we're looking at making the change and pass the resolution? Should the board president or vice president make that call is what I guess I'm asking? Yeah, you know, after, after the resolution is passed. Or before.
I'm not sure what you're asking me.
Okay, so we're gonna bring a resolution at the next meeting with regards to this? So I'm saying, do we, does a call need to be made to them before or after?
Either me or Mr. Smith should probably call the Oaks and ask the process, but if that's what you're asking.
Yes, that's what I'm asking. I don't wanna, I don't wanna misstep and I don't wanna-
Yeah, I've already had the conversation with the superintendent of the Oaks, but we've not done anything formal. It's just that he came to me asking about it and I said that the board is considering something different.
Okay.
All right, so that, so that they won't be surprised.
Right. And it's not that we haven't been satisfied with what Mr. Burdy has been presenting with us, we would just like for the representative to be on our board because they're, you know, a little more skin in a game kind of thing. So that, we, we wanna make sure that we do it properly and to protocol so that we don't get called back and say, oh, you missed a step. And so we wanna make sure we follow that.
And then finally, Dr. Johnson, depending on what the board's appetite is for this transition, I think it would be really fitting for someone to contact Mr. Burdy so that he's aware in advance.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Thank you for that discussion. Any other motions or recommendations? Seeing none, the next item on the agenda is thirteen point oh one, comments from members of the board.
I just have two quick things, actually three, I'm gonna say real quick. One, the, I know that the superintendent had mentioned the celebration of excellence. Is there a date for that?
Drew Jackson has every date that you ever wanna know about.
The celebration of excellence?
There are two.
Yes, there are two.
Okay.
So the first one is March seventh, they're both on Thursdays, and that's South Campus or Columbia.
Okay.
So March seventh, and then the following Thursday, March fourteenth, and then Thursday seventh as well.
And that's-
They're South Campus, Columbia Garden, three days later.
Week before spring break?
So March seventh is South Campus, March fourteenth is North Campus. Okay.
And what's the timeframe on that? Um, the start time, end time?
So we are sort of timing the time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Perfect, thank you. And then, um, I'll just stick with two things. The second thing, I just wanna mention the resolution for the School Counseling Week. I just wanted to say publicly, we have a great team in our schools, so I just wanna acknowledge them and thank them for the service that they do to our students. I think we just, we just have some stellar people in our department. As a licensed social worker, I know it's hard work and it's a thankless job, so I just wanna publicly say thank you to the group that we have working for our school district because I think we have some of the best of the best. So I'm glad that we're able to recognize them and have a, a week that we can just really acknowledge the hard work that they do every day, so.
The good thing about it that you just mentioned, they are, as far as longevity, they, it's the same counselors. And usually, because counselors are hard to find, people are jumping to the highest bidder and they are staying very committed to this work because they believe in project-based learning in our students, so tribute to them.
Dr. Johnson?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to echo that and what Mr. Smith said because some of the counselors remember my son and he graduated in twenty fifteen. So there's still some of the same counselors that were there that worked with him during that time, so we do appreciate them. Also, thank you to the community for their service to us and we do want your support and need your support, need your mentorship for our students. And we do appreciate those that came out tonight that were recognized. Thank you for our board recognition. It's always kind of funny when you're a brand-new board member, you're like, I'm one month in and, you know, I'm getting recognized, but that's so that you'll stick around. So stick around, it gets more, the fun hasn't even started, so. This is quite rewarding work that we do and we appreciate the opportunity to be able to do this and, and to do it with fidelity. And so that's just about it. I, you know, I had my computer down so I didn't get to gather my thoughts. Yes, my hands are tied, so, but thank you, Madam President.
And thank you, Dr. Johnson. Mr. Spielman?
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate all the students that got awards tonight. And anytime you have a, a student getting an award, you have a, a whole line of teachers behind that that deserve congratulations too. So I would like to congratulate the teachers that are falling behind all those students that got awards. And the student, not everybody can get an award, but there are some, there's hard-working students out there backed up by teachers and, and we just wanted to say thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Mr. Spielman. I would like to again echo the sentiments of the board, congratulate Lisa Gussa Mendoza, Cameron Wilkinson, Taylor Kriggs, Ms. Megan Weaver, Ms. Jackie Braswell, as well as our two talented artists, Alyssa and Allison. I especially want to congratulate them. I cannot draw a sick figure correctly, so I'm always enamored with anyone that has that special skill or talent to draw or to put colors together and make them a picture. I'm still amazed by that, that talent, so congratulations to you all. I'd also like to congratulate and thank my board members. I echo Dr. Johnson's sentiment. This is a labor of love and I, I'm super appreciative for everyone for having the confidence in us all to represent your interests and represent the interests of the students and your family and the communities in which we serve. So thank you. Oh, last but not least, thank you to Wintonwood Community Media for being here, for showing up, and for the stellar work that they do.
and for the stellar work that they do, and for all of the um, people that come out to watch as well as support their families and their students when they get awards, so, thank you.
Superintendent Smith?
Yeah, it would be really nice if um, the board would show the uh, community what's in your special bags.
Oh, yes. Dr. Johnson's been waiting for that. Okay, Dr. Johnson.
We'll need one, 'cause they're, they're the same, so, yeah, yeah.
I get to open it.
This is something so you can carry around with you, Ms. Bryant, as you're walking through the streets of Cincinnati.
Okay.
I was trying to fill it to see whether we could.
So this is for our championship teams and opportunities and cool flags. I see people still riding around with tattered Bengal flags, even though they're done, uh, maybe this gives it.
We can get a new one. If the weather beats this one up.
These are tatter-proof, Doc.
These are tatter-proof.
I love it, I love it.
So you have both of each color, blue and green, representing our both, uh, you know, both of our communities.
I love it, that's awesome.
That's amazing.
Awesome.
I love my warrior gear, my backpack. I, I don't know if I told the, the story, I was in the airport with my Wintonwood's backpack and passed a young woman, and she goes, I know that district, I went to school. She went to school in Forest Park, and we started having this conversation about the district and wanting to volunteer to give back, so I thought you just never know when you're gonna run into a warrior, so.
So, right now, the, the price of the flag is reasonable, but when you win a championship team, you know the price of the flag goes up.
They do go up. So uh, the next time we have our um, homecoming parade, don't lose your flags.
Yes.
Let's display them proudly.
And I can tell you, the uh, girls' basketball team and the boys' basketball team are playing very, very well, so, look out.
They are playing well.
Yes, they are.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you. Mr. Seymour, do you have any comments?
I don't think.
Okay, no comments? The next item on the agenda is a motion to go into um, first session? Do we have a meeting for an executive session?
We have a meeting for your exact first session?
No.
I don't think so.
Nope? All right, that's always good news. All right, so the very last agenda item is fifteen oh one, adjournment. Thank you all for being here. I now call this meeting of January twenty-second to a close.